Hi, everybody. Welcome to our meeting tonight. We want to get started and dive right in. So our discussion session will be a couple of things, but first off, we'll start with the the report or the presentation for our livable communities master plan.
Can't see you. Can you put the zoom on our screens? Yeah, we should be able to see.
It'll be via Zoom, everybody.
Hi, Tony. Hi. Can everybody hear me?
Great. So tonight we have Agency Planning and Landscape who is going to talk over the livable communities master plan. We have Liz Cormack and Reece Sinclair, who are leading up the team. And we also have Bobby from Recreation Results and Tammy from Tool Design Group. And they, obviously Bobby will talk a little bit about the recreation component. And then Tammy will speak on the bike lanes. So I will turn it over to Liz and her team. And we will have them hit the road, hit the ground running here.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tony. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. We'll do brief introductions. Ree will be joining us momentarily. And I'll let Tammy start.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. I'm Tammy Sufi with Tool Design, part of the team, obviously, here. And we worked on the bicycle and pedestrian component. And it was a great project, great fun. So thanks for letting us wrap it up here with you today.
Awesome. Bobby, if you want to go next.
Sure. I'll echo Tammy's thoughts and say, thanks. It's been a great experience working with your community and organization on this project. And Bobby Nance, the president of Recreation Results, and we were, played a role in managing the recreation programs and operations portion of the project.
Thank you both. And I am Liz Cormack. I'm a senior urban planner here at Agency. And I had the honor of serving as the project manager for this, this plan. Very excited to walk you through it today. So I know that we are tight on time and want to wrap up sooner than later today. So we will keep it brief and look forward to holding questions at the, at the end. We are going to talk through the plan process and engagement, then dive into how to use this plan, including an introduction to the four goals that really serve as the foundation for the plan. And finally, we'll talk about what's next, diving into implementation, a few priority actions that we really want to put a spotlight on today. In addition to the wonderful group that is, that I'm joined by here today, we were also joined by ETC Institute. They conducted a statistically valid survey to support this project. They're also the folks who do your annual citizen satisfaction survey. And of course, we were led here by the wonderful leadership at your Departments of Public Works and Parks and Recreation. This was a really wonderful opportunity to, to really talk about the intersection between the mission of those two departments at the city of Clayton and how, and how they both can really advance their goals of a livable community. We kicked off this project in June of 2023, and we submitted an initial draft of the report in June of this year. You can see three different rounds of, of public engagement really supported the three, the three big picture phases of the plan. And we'll start by diving into that. Before I do, if I can put you on the spot, Ree, just want to give you an opportunity to say hello.
Hello, everyone. Apologies for being late. I was an attendee, but I'm happily promoted to a panelist. My, again, my name is Rhiannon. I've, I think I've met you all before, but excited to be here again. I'm a principal and planner with Agency Landscape and Planning and, and here to support Liz and Tammy and Bobby in this final presentation.
Thanks, Ree. So, um, first of all, we worked very closely with the comprehensive planning process with Clayton Tomorrow 2040. We, of course, felt it was essential to really be in lockstep with your comprehensive plan. We did joint engagement activities, the two open houses you saw in December and March, and I know some of you joined us at, were in collaboration with that group. The sort of, you know, there's of course, a lot of intersections, and we've worked hard to ensure that the, the strategies put forth by this plan are really advancing and kind of furthering, further expanding on some of the goals of Clayton Tomorrow. This plan in particular is really replacing Parks and Recreation's last master plan, which was completed in 2007, as well as the 2009 Bikeable Walkable Communities Plan. Importantly, many communities shaped this plan in terms of community input so far. We've heard from folks in a variety of pop-up activities through multiple rounds of online engagement, in addition to public workshops. We were also, you know, had, had the opportunity to collaborate closely with a number of stakeholder groups at Clayton. Our wonderful steering committee has really stewarded this work, so has really shaped the, the plan that you're going to see now. And thank you to Susan for, for joining us on that committee and really lending her leadership there, as well as the Citizens Advisory Task Force, which ensured that resident input was also really central to how this project was stewarded and was represented in, in a number of different ways in the plan. We also met a number of times with the Parks and Recreation Commission and with yourselves. So thank you to folks who have engaged in the project and really shaped the report thus far. This is just a quick look at some of the, the engagement activities and the events that we hosted throughout the project, including pop-ups out and about and the open houses. And what we really heard across demographics, across different sort of events, parts of the city, different neighborhoods, were these three big themes. And these really serve as the foundation for the, the proposals, the goals that you'll see in the plan. The first is vibrant and inclusive programming. The community really expressed an interest in more diverse programming, especially culture and arts programming in Clayton. The second is safe and thoughtful connections. We heard this again and again. Folks are really interested in opting to walk or bike for daily trips under half a mile, for example, and really desire safer and more comfortable routes to do so in the city of Clayton. The third is activated and adaptable public spaces. We, you have a really fabulous park system, the gems of which are Shaw Park and Oak Knoll Park. And folks are opting to travel longer distances to these parks. You'll see, you know, kind of how we reflected people's interest in, in thinking about how to really balance uses and balance programming across Clayton and throughout the city in those parks, but also beyond. So you'll see these goals, the themes, a number of themes that we heard from community engagement there on the left, really drove the creation of the four goals that are the foundation of this plan. So how to use this plan? Before we jump into the goals, we wanted to kind of ground ourselves in what the plan is and what the plan is not. We see the plan first and foremost, you know, it has been a process through which we've really collaborated with the community and with stakeholders to develop that shared vision that you'll see moving forward and that we, you know, want to put forth as, as the goals of a livable community. It is, you know, by design, not meant to be overly prescriptive, so that it can be flexible, really, to a changing world in the next decade. It is designed to serve really as a strategic framework for the city to use to advance the community's needs. Finally, we see it as a guide for how to meet those needs in the next 10 years. So hopefully you can see this plan as a tool, as you prioritize further investments, a tool to ensure that you're doing so in a way that meets the community's stated priorities. So the plan is structured. Hopefully, some of you have had a chance to take a look at the, the document, but we'll want to walk through it here in brief. The plan is structured, really built on that foundation of the community's vision. There's the four goals. Each of the four goals is supported by a collection of strategies, and, and under each strategy is a collection of actions designed to advance that strategy. Finally, there's the implementation plan, which serves as, as really sort of that, that ground on which to, to start to, to get things done. And, and we're excited to dive into that a little bit today. And this is what you'll see in the plan. On the top left is the strategy, followed by the description. And on the right are those actions to support that. So in building and really continuing to be a top livable community in Clayton, we see four critical goals in the next 10 years. One is to activate, to leverage public space as a platform for gathering and connection. Two is to really focus on accessibility. And here we really need access between places to make it easy for people of all ages and abilities to walk or ride to their destination. Three is to collaborate, to partner with the community to meet Clayton's goals of equity and sustainability, in particular now and in the future. And finally, to sustain, to sustain the system you have today and strategically embrace Clayton's role as a recreation hub for both the community and the region. So I'm going to dive into each of these goals. Of course, we won't, we won't have time to go into the detail of every strategy that supports these goals, but we want to kind of spend a little bit on each one. For goal number one, leveraging public space as a platform. These are some of the, the sort of big ideas from community engagement that have support, have driven this, the creation of this goal. We heard an interest in really creating more spaces for the community to gather, to get together, to connect. But we also heard that folks were interested in really investing in what you have today, generally more than creating new. Some of the examples of how you could measure success against this goal are on the right here. We don't include specific, we, we don't sort of commit the city to specific metrics as a part of this report, as a part of this plan, but we do include examples of how you could measure success in the next, in the coming years. Here, you could look at dollars per capita spent on capital improvements in parks, or percent of identified ADA improvement projects completed annually. And some of the strategies, you know, these are sort of a brief, a brief summary, and you can see the full language in the report. Some of the strategies we think are essential to advancing this goal are, are things like really embracing year-round use of your park space and being thoughtful about how that can happen in four seasons, defining flexible space for pop-up programming to support this community's stated interest in additional pop-up programs, festivals, markets, and really kind of starting to build the relationships and infrastructure to partner to activate space, partner, for example, with local businesses, as well as, as artists in the community, a little bit even more than you are today. The second goal is to make it easy for people of all ages and abilities to walk or ride to their destination. Again, we heard this frequently from the community. An improved bike network was the top rated goal by the public in our most recent open house. We heard again and again feelings that there was a lack of safety, in particular at intersections, and that folks were really interested in, in creating a, a network that was in particular, for example, safe and comfortable for children and families to use. Some of the ways that a city can measure, that, that the city can measure success against this goal could be number of intersections with improved safety countermeasures in Clayton, as well as the increase in use of walking, cycling, or micro mobility for short trips, which is something that you can continue to monitor, for example, through your annual citizen satisfaction survey. Some of the strategies to advance this goal, one is to provide a high-quality bike network, which I will share a little bit more about, but also to recognize the, the sort of critical role that programming and policy also plays in, in building really a culture and a broader awareness of multiple modes of transport in the city. We see the bike network is really being made up of a number of elements. It's, it's no one thing. The proposal that you see, put forth by our, our wonderful partners at Tool Design, and really building on their, their expertise in this nationally is, is built in kind of the four parts. So one is a spine network. We recognize that on busier roads, really where you're seeing higher volumes of traffic and faster speeds, those bigger intersections and separated, separated bike, bike lanes and, and infrastructure really is necessary. The data is very clear that that's critical for cyclist safety on those busier roads. That said, bike boulevards are then a really important piece of this here. This is a critical part of, of this sort of proposal. You see those in, in orange. These are, these are sort of spaces where cyclists can share the roadway with vehicular traffic on lower volume, lower speed roadways, and where traffic calming, traffic calming infrastructure, like raised intersections and clear wayfinding, can make that safe on, on those streets for cyclists to share the road with cars. Safe crossings, as we've mentioned, are a really critical component of this work. We recognize the complexity and that some of the, the intersections that emerged as priorities across data, you know, and from many sources, are ones that are really under the jurisdiction of the St. Louis, of St. Louis County. But we have a couple proposals here in the plan that we think, you know, can, can support you in the coming years to still address those, since they are so important to the network. And finally, there's trails and the role of trails. You don't have a lot of extra space in Clayton to, to build out an additional and expand the trail network, but you have this amazing resource at the Centennial Greenway. We see a huge opportunity to better connect that to the rest of the network by better, by improving really that connection through the south of Shaw Park. The third goal is to partner with the community to meet Clayton's goals of equity and sustainability now and in the future. We heard a real commitment citywide to sustainability, and as well as, you know, the, an interest really in the, in the culture and history of Clayton. We also want to ensure from an equity standpoint that your recreation programs are accessible to all, and that, that sustainability is really, is prioritized, both in parks and facilities, but also in terms of how you're incentivizing green infrastructure and private development. So those are some of the strategies you see here to advance that goal. The, the fourth goal here is to strategically embrace Clayton's role as a recreation hub for both the community and the region. You are a sort of a really unique space with your vibrant downtown and your, your vibrant daytime population. So there's a not insignificant number of, of folks, for example, who are members of the Center of Clayton, who are not residents in the city of Clayton. And that actually gives you an opportunity to do some, some really great things in the city that we have, you know, the, our impression right now is that that is allowing you to, you know, invest in these incredible amenities and recreation resources that you have at a scale really sort of beyond your population size. We, we also see in this goal, opportunity to advance this goal, opportunity to sort of, it to really lean into that, that interest in programming and, and additional arts and cultural programming in particular. When we did exercises with, with the community as to what they are interested in from an event standpoint, we found that really folks are looking, are, are interested in additional sort of pop-up events, where, you know, where it's a festival or a market focused on food and dining, for example, that is family friendly. So, so not a massive flagship event so much as a series of smaller events in the city. We also, here you'll see in the report, an interest in expanding joint use agreements. This is something that you're doing today with University City's Ruth Park Golf Course. So Clayton residents have resident rates at the golf course. We see this as a model that can really be expanded on to meet the community's needs in the city without making sort of those major, major investments in additional resources where your neighbors are already offering a, a service in that regard. So to, to conclude, want to talk about next steps and, and implementation of the livable community plan. We, we recognize not everything can be done tomorrow. This is really a plan for the next decade in the city of Clayton. And we, you'll see that the, the proposed strategies or enactions are broken up into three phases moving forward. The first is near-term implementation. We see these as high priorities for the community and largely within the city's control and capacity, which means that these can be taken on really in the near future. The next is midterm implementation. These are critical investments, but ones that may require planning or external collaboration, and therefore, you know, take a bit longer. We see those as, as happening in the next zero to five years. And finally, longer-term efforts. These are bigger, more complex efforts that will, that will take time. That doesn't necessarily mean that they should not be started or planned in the, in the nearer term, but we recognize that these are going to be ongoing projects. In the top right, you see a photo. Thank you to, to folks who joined us in the, in the steering committee activity to really move through the prioritization exercise. And so you'll really see that, that in the plan, that, that, that the steering committee has really shaped a lot of the phasing that you see proposed. So in the plan, you'll see the phases broken up this way, the suggested phase for each of the actions, the likely owner of that action, and then on the right, key partners, recognizing, as we've mentioned, the collaboration is a key part to advancing this plan. There's sort of a number of folks who are likely will need to be involved. And pulling from these, we just wanted to talk about a sort of subset that we think are immediate wins for, for, for to advance the goals of a livable community in the near term. The first is to begin to address the stated community desire for safer streets and intersections. We know that this is a priority, and we see a couple of ways that the city can start to address this now. One is to develop a safety awareness campaign to increase awareness of cyclists, pedestrians, and all users in the transportation system. This is really, we think, a critical element in really building a culture of walking and biking in the city of Clayton and shared awareness on the road. The second is to consider temporary demonstration projects at priority intersections to test out safety countermeasures. This is really a, a proven method, both to prototype longer-term investment, but also to build support amongst the public and stakeholders. The second, which I've alluded to, is to expand reciprocal use agreements. There are some sort of unmet, you know, unmet needs that are high interest to your, to your residents. But again, we, we heard from folks a, a preference to expand or invest in what exists rather than build new. And with that in mind, we see an opportunity to really, to build new reciprocal use agreements, for example, with the Brentwood Indoor Ice Rink, to start to meet that need by really leveraging what some of your surrounding, your neighboring municipalities offer. Finally, is to start to establish the necessary infrastructure to increase events programming. Our understanding is that this was often also a really popular topic in the comprehensive plan. That idea of, of, you know, you, you have a really vibrant downtown today, thinking about how to, to continue to build, build on that and make that more vibrant in the future. There's a couple of things that you can start sort of in the shorter term, including ensuring restaurants are open year-round, engaging residents on proposed locations for road closures. Our understanding is this may already be happening, which is awesome. Working with local businesses to grow event vending support, starting to build those, those relationships, that network, and studying the feasibility of a new flexible plaza space in Shaw Park. We did want to take a look here at what that could look like in a little bit more detail. We included, you'll see in the plan, a few concept plans in a section called transformative projects. This is, is one of them. And, and this is really an exploration at a very high, high level, a very conceptual level, that sought to, to take a look from a, you know, measuring spatially what could go into this space. So we, we did explore five concepts. The first is really looking at flexible uses. The second is really looking at events specifically, so large and small events infrastructure. The third, if you really focused on sports recreation, what would that look like? And how much could you fit there? And you'll see that we, we are from this test fit, you know, from a conceptual level, I think there's a big opportunity to incorporate, you know, there's an opportunity to incorporate a skate park, you could fit a basketball court, and then up to six pickleball courts. Concept four is to go all in on nature. We did hear an interest from the community in additional nature experiences, which your current recreation programming, you sort of has a, a gap in today. But this, you know, if you were going to really lean into that in this space, I wonder what could that look like? And then finally, a hybrid approach, which I'll show in a little bit more detail here. At the right is, is the spaces you see it today. And, you know, Parks and Recreation has, has very, very brilliantly really incorporated these, these four pickleball courts to kind of, to activate the, the space today. We were surprised that you really can fit quite a few pickleball courts in a lot of these concepts, even more than you have now. On the right, so on the, on the far right here, is, is Brentwood Boulevard. And we, the, the green stripe here is a two-way, two-way bike lane, which is, you know, the Brentwood Boulevard is part of that spine network proposed by the plan. You see, there's actually a grade change down to Brentwood Boulevard here, which we see as an opportunity to really treat as a community front porch, an idea you'll see in a couple of the concepts. A flexible lawn space could really accommodate a number of different uses throughout the year. A shade structure could serve as sort of a, a flexible use for a number of different events, but also cover seating for, for workday lunches. And then a smaller version of the skate park, we feel, could still meet, a need that we heard from young people in Clayton. You know, Shaw Park is, of course, adjacent to Clayton High School. We heard from the, the mayor's youth council member who represented on the Citizen Advisory Task Force, that right now, you know, young people are, are leaving school in the afternoon and going into Shaw Park and, and feel like there's nothing in particular for them in Shaw Park today. We feel that there is a sort of an opportunity in this space to also meet the needs of teens, and that that can be really designed as a, as a really wonderful place to, to hang out. And then the, the six pickleball courts can fit nonetheless. So that is all we have for now, is a quick overview of the plan. We really appreciate your time and look forward to your questions.
Thank you. That, that's a great presentation, really informative. And I'm actually kind of glad we have this. I know that we've all taken a look at the plan, but in terms of a deep dive, I think it's nice to have this sort of introductory sort of roadmap put out for us so we can then dive into it and, and make some decisions, you know, in the, in the near future. So thank you very much. So I'm, I'm just gonna, I think we're going to allow about 10 minutes for questions because we do have an important presentation from sustainability to see. So I'm just going to start in order of seniority and see if you have any comments or questions for now, knowing that we are going to get into this fully, you know, at a later meeting.
No, Liz, thank you for the presentation. I really like looking at the plan. I think you guys did a great job of laying it out. It's just really easy to read and easy to look at. I definitely liked, I love seeing the transformative projects. I'm not very good at, I'm not very creative, so I really appreciated you guys giving us ideas on how we can move forward. That was great. And, I mean, I, I have questions about different things that you guys suggested. I'm not sure we really have time for that today, but I just did want to say thank you for all the ideas you guys gave. As we move forward, are you available to staff for, you know, questions as we try to implement the plan? Or is that, I mean, is it, is it an ongoing kind of, I mean, are, are you available for ongoing questions or?
I can answer this one, Liz. Hi, everyone. Rhiannon. Finally got my video to work. I, I would say that we've developed quite a relationship with Tony and Matt. And through that relationship, you know, we've, we've always made ourselves available throughout this plan process, and we'll continue to make ourselves available to them as they, as they lead or champion the plan process. But we do, we do imagine that they will very much lead and direct this plan process, and, and we will be there to support them.
Great. And I, you know, and the other thing I would say too is, I loved all the ideas you gave us. You know, so many of our arterials are not, are not in our control, which is frustrating to us. So it's, but I look forward to, you know, again, maybe trying to find ways to work with the county to make our intersections safer and, you know, better for pedestrians and bikes. And one of the things I was going to ask you was you guys suggested some sort of awareness campaign. And maybe that would be something that would be easy to do, just to remind people who are in cars to, you know, be on the lookout for pedestrians and bikes. Like what do you guys, what do you envision that, that that would look like?
I can jump in here. Yeah, thanks for that. I, I do think that especially as communities are looking more at safety, which is happening all over the country, we're really looking at these kind of holistic approaches. So not just the infrastructure, but those educational campaigns as well. And I think they're really important. I think maybe the first thing I would recommend is that make, you make sure that that campaign is really directed at all users so that there are messages that are targeted for motorists, for bicyclists, for pedestrians, and really kind of having a conversation around behavior of everyone, not just one particular user group. Those conversations tend to go a lot better than picking out one group and saying, okay, you need to change. That, that usually doesn't go all that well. So that would be my first suggestion. And there's lots of great examples out there of educational campaigns. There's a little bit less information on how effective they are. So we could certainly share with staff some examples of campaigns that we think are strong, and you could look at those as models.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, because even just understanding how you go about that messaging, I mean, you know, not everybody reads our emails or do you put, you know, you know, digital signs up that the police put up, you know, I don't know. It's just understanding how we even get the message out to people. So.
Yeah, we can share some information. And having some information in schools too is a great place to start, just like future, you know, people who walk and bike now in schools are also your future drivers. So the more sensitive they are to the safety issues for all users can be a really effective, effective way to reach people in the long term.
Kids are also the first ones to call out their parents when they do something wrong.
For sure.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for all the work and thanks for the presentation. I think that where I think we find ourselves is that we, as a city, need to identify, you know, the capital versus the operation. we as a city need to identify, you know, the capital versus the operational, the, the priorities and the numbers behind it. For example, when we talk about ADA compliance and accessibility, where are the issues? What's our baseline? I don't, I don't have a good grasp on that yet. When I delve into the plan, maybe I'll have a better idea. And then in prioritizing it, you know, how we get there, the same thing with intersections and things like that. Where, where in particular, you know, where is the data telling us where the concerns are and the challenges and what's most feasible for us to start doing? Education on top of that and the programming are, you know, as we look at the budget tonight, are a different category of how we get there, but getting the structures in place, I think, is going to take some more diving into, into the data that you all, that you all collected. And the same thing with reciprocal uses, there's the ice rink is an obvious, an obvious reciprocal use to, to pursue. And I, and we have to wonder where, where we can also offer services and what else is out there that people want to use. Do we, do we build pickleball courts and basketball? Or do we work with somebody else to have those things accessible to our community? So I think a lot of it is work on the board now that you've identified kind of a bigger overlay. The improved bicycle network is interesting that then come up. It seems that came up from the beginning, the walkability. And a lot of that will be capital focused and then the education on how to get that done. So it's a no real questions, just a lot more, you know, the, the data behind it all is what I think that we're gonna have to get into more and we may need you for that too.
And also, just as a clarifier, we relied on the reason that a lot of the ADA information is not in the plan is because we relied on past planning by other consultants who had, who are ADA, ADA focused consultants who provided a lot of that work. And so we leaned into their work and referenced their work and did not include it in our own work.
Thanks. Very good. Thanks.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, thanks a lot for the work and the presentation. One knit that I probably could have just emailed is that the High Point neighborhood has an E at the end of it. And so if we would catch that, I'm sure they would appreciate it. I love the emphasis on connecting to what exists, partnering, amplifying things that are already happening. I think it's really important for us not to imagine that like we can or should replace what other people are doing or, or just try to do it better if we don't really need to, right? So I love that. I noticed, a big fan of traffic circles. I noticed you mentioned those and I think you had some specific recommendations for them along Glen Ridge. As an example, I was wondering if you, if there, and I might've missed like some of the detail in the plan, if there were other specific sites that were recommended or if that's something our staff would just look at going forward.
Do you want me to take that one, Liz?
Go for it.
Yeah, so we did develop a few example concepts for the bike boulevards. If there are any of you who haven't dug into that part of the plan, a bike boulevard is on a low traffic, low volume neighborhood street. And the idea is that with some, with some traffic calming, you can really create a nice bikeway where bicyclists of all ages can share space with cars safely because you're maintaining slow speeds of motor vehicles with that traffic calming. So we did identify a number of those throughout the community and we just gave a couple sample concepts. And so that's the one you're referring to with Glen Ridge where we would have some traffic circles, raised intersections and things like that to maintain those safe speeds around 20, 25 miles per hour through the neighborhoods.
Thanks. I was excited to see the top goal of the improved bike network. I was an early and continued supporter of our first protected bike lane. And I use it. And, and I think like it's been somewhat contentious. And I think one of the biggest things that we haven't done well yet as a city is like really make it clear to people that it's a bike lane by painting it differently or doing the things that I personally, I mean, it's, I, there's probably evidence on this, but like anecdotally, I know it makes a difference if it's painted green or if the little bicycle figure is like painted on it more often so that it's very clear what it is to drivers and people who don't know what it is. So I'm excited about the opportunity to increase education and awareness of all of these different things for all the aspects of the community. And the last thing I want to say is I'm a huge fan of the inclusion of the skate park in the Shaw Park Plaza concepts. And so I just think that's really exciting. And I won't be here in two weeks, but I support the adoption.
We will probably not talk about it in two weeks anyway, so you'll see. We'll see when that happens. Okay, Rick, go on.
Great. Thank you again for your work. I've got a question. My question is, based on your work with other communities, I'm wondering if you have any best practices to recommend to us regarding implementation of this plan? And what I'm thinking of maybe as a specific example, this whole bike network, which is a, I guess, a conglomeration of a lot of different ideas. You know, are these the kinds of things that it's better to approach comprehensively or more piecemeal and do what you can? So if you can give any general implementation ideas about the plan as, as in general or about the bike, the bike plan specifically?
Can I kick that and then we can have Tammy dive in more on the bike front?
Yep. So I think generally happy to share any best practices for implementation. You know, I think one, one initial thought that I have is that many of you participated in our early implementation workshops a few months ago when we all met and we further refined those together with Tony and Matt and Anna, just to clarify who is kind of championing each of those actions, who is meant to be responsible for at least ensuring that that action is guided and who is partnering around that action. And then also just giving a sense for phasing our priorities for each of those actions. And, and we did that together with them in part because they, you know, their, their approach to implementation wants to be kind of focused on bite sized chunks that, that gain or that get them to the broader whole rather than trying to do everything all at once. And we support that and we've worked in many communities where that has been a really great method of, of going about implementation. But it really depends on who it is that's championing the plan and making sure that they are comfortable and support and are, have accountability to those actions. I think the other piece that I'll mention is, is, is related to that accountability. There are metrics in the plan that are celebratory and to identify where, where you as a city are making progress. And in communities that we've worked in, like Denver, Colorado or Greensboro, North Carolina, communicating those wins with the community and celebrating those wins with the community together in, in online newsletters, on social media and annual reports has been a really great way to, to go about implementation, implementation too, because you get community support. It feels good to be part of the team or to be part of a city that is making progress. And it, it just helps to maintain momentum. And so I'll, I'll leave you with those two kind of high level thoughts. And then Tammy, I'll let you take on the, the big, the big bucket of, of bike.
Sure. Well, there are a lot of recommendations in there for bikes. I don't think you're gonna be able to do them all at once and I wouldn't recommend that anyway. I think you learn a lot with each project that you implement and I think then you can build on that for your future projects, which is really important. I do think that, you know, we, we have, as we said, divided these into short, mid and long-term projects. And so that's a way to approach it. But also I would say seize the opportunity to build whenever you can. So if you're doing a repaving, if you're doing a sewer project that's gonna tear up the roadway anyway, now that you have a plan and you have those lines on the map, that's a great opportunity to, to get something done that maybe would have been more expensive otherwise. And then I would also say some of these projects are gonna take a long time. Those conversations, as somebody mentioned earlier, those conversations with the county in particular, like that's gonna take some doing. And so those are longer term, ongoing projects and conversations. But I do think that as a community, you know, seize all those opportunities, but then make sure you're choosing one of those big challenging projects that you work on over time. Because if you keep waiting, it'll never happen. So that's the other piece you have to remember. But I do think it's gonna happen in chunks and it's gonna be fantastic and celebrate every one of those wins because they're all important.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to just say we want to speed up a little bit because we want to be fair to sustainability committee. So if we can make our questions and our answers short, that would be great. Sorry, Jeff.
You're asking me, you're asking me to be short?
Yeah.
So two questions. One's a data question, one's kind of a other question. So you talked about the amount of surveys and the amount of workshop attendees. Can you put that in perspective for us on an absolute number as well as relative to the population of Clayton? Like, is that a good amount of responses, not a good amount of responses? Like, you know, right, like we're gonna use this plan to, to make a decision for the city and I want to get a better sense of like, how many citizens actually can participate in this? And what does that compare to other cities?
Liz, I imagine you want to take this one on.
Yeah, feel free to, to add on. Right, I think, I think it's a, a great question and it's, it is a, a common question. We feel really, really good about the engagement being representative of, of your community as a whole. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, at the end of the day, you know, not, not everyone has the time or the interest in participating. And so we would never expect to see total participation. That's just, just not reflective of folks' interest in how they want to engage in, in, in city life. But the statistically valid survey was designed really to get a representative sample. What that means is that we distributed so that the respondents are, are representative of the demographics of, of Clayton as a whole and meet a threshold of respondents so that we feel confident in the statistical validity of that. We also were able to really access a number of folks through the number of methods that we used. So folks who engaged at pop-ups or online probably didn't come to open houses. And that helped us ensure that, you know, we were not just reaching people who were able to join us for an evening event at the center of Clayton. You know, we had really amazing conversations and deep engagement at those events. But yeah, so I would say that compared to the sort of work that we've done elsewhere, you know, throughout the United States, we, we feel really good about this being a representative of, of the community's thoughts and feelings.
The only other quick question then is on the recommendations. And if you have this data, you can send it later. Is, was there any micro recommendations? For example, you know, you talk about neighborhoods, I'm thinking like basketball courts. But was there any data to show that the neighborhoods around Oak Knoll Park would want them there as opposed to people wanting them in Shaw Park? Is there any way to, to get at that micro level data? So when we're talking about where to put some of this stuff, where it may make sense? If you got to, great. If you have it behind the scenes, you can send it to us later, that'd be fine too.
Yeah, I saw you and me, but I, I will say yes and no. I think that you'll see some level of detail in the plan that's more sort of location specific. And there is, we will, we'll certainly will share the survey data with you, which can also be broken out sort of more specifically. But the, there's, so you, you will see some of that in the plan. We didn't do really sort of a specific engagement neighborhood by neighborhood to kind of focus at that level, since we were really looking at the system citywide. But there are some, some thoughts in the plan that can answer that question.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff, for being short and sweet. So I'm not gonna make any comments now, knowing that we're gonna, you know, ta-talk about this at length later. I think, again, thank you for the work. It's a, it's a really great plan and I, I am confident. We had lots of robust community engagement. So it's, it's a great jumping off spot for us. And we will be talking about it again in a few weeks, devoting like an entire meeting to it. And we will probably need your, we'll have more questions for you at that time. So don't go too far away. All right. So we're gonna switch gears now and ask our sustainability chair to come forward and talk to us about a couple of things that she has for us. And Deb, I just want to say we promised you 20 minutes and you shall have 20 minutes.
We will make it as quick as we can. I'm gonna talk tonight about the Green Dining Alliance, but I've also given over some of my time to our intern Kate Young, who's gonna talk about our Dark Skies efforts for both Oak Knoll and Shaw Park. So to kick that off, I want to first just go after Green Dining Alliance, which is an overlap of where we have some food and dining issues. We just heard about that and sustainability. So the two come together. Three things I'm gonna tell you about tonight is just generally what is Green Dining Alliance? Why we want to support that inhabit present here in Clayton? And the last thing is a request, the first time I've ever come to you and asked you for money. All the other presentations we've ever made and things we've asked for have not required money and this is not gonna ask for a lot, but we're gonna at least want to put that on the table. Tonight, joining us, we have Jillian Garland, who's, I believe, still back there. She's with the Green Dining Alliance program. She has worked on this with us as well as Kate has. Jillian joined Green Dining Alliance this spring. She has her undergraduate degree in sustainability from Maryville. She comes out of a restaurant background and experience set, so she knows a lot about what some of our restaurants might want. Why do we care about this? Why is Sustainability Committee even bringing forward Green Dining Alliance? I think you have heard me in presentations before say our North Star is really looking at how do we impact climate change? And this is a piece of it. The third largest contributor of human caused methane gas emissions comes from our landfills and that comes from rotting food waste. And it's a huge problem. Thirty percent of the food in the United States is wasted and most, it is the most abundant material. You can flip that slide. Sorry, I guess I didn't tell you that. It's the most abundant material that's sent off to landfills and a lot of it comes from restaurants. So what can we do about that? Hopefully we can get after the composting of that food waste rather than sending it straight up to landfills. Clayton does a really good job. All of us as residents of Clayton have the opportunity to compost in with our yard waste. If you're not doing it, I hope you will. But our restaurants don't have that same easy option. But it is one of the things that Green Dining Alliance focuses on. So if you can flip to the next slide, I really am gonna try and like punch it up. So what is the Green Dining Alliance? It is part of Earth Day 365. It's a restaurant certification program that's been sponsored by a number of different groups, including the St. Louis Jefferson Solid Waste Management District. They have since 2012 certified over 100 different restaurants, breweries, coffee shops, all kinds of places, many of which are listed up here on the slide. You can take a look at them. Some of them are close to us, some of them a little further out. Right here in Clayton, we have Crushed Red, The Avenue Restaurant, Pastoria and Qualities that either currently are right on it or slightly lapsed in, in my observation. The money comes from the tipping fees when all the trucks go to the landfills. So that's what goes to support the Earth Day 365 and the Green Dining Alliance. Next slide, please. What's their mission? It's first to reduce the carbon, the CO2 footprint through energy emissions, reduce food waste, reduce single use plastics and ban Styrofoam, improve recycling and composting, all of the things that you can see up on the slide right now. They do that by going in and working with each individual restaurant and telling them what needs to change. And then also, next slide, please. This really was gonna be a longer presentation. Helping them by providing, let's skip to the next one. Providing support. So they'll help them with grants of up to $240 a year on composting. They'll give them $500 to try and cut over from their current single use plastics to some reusable products. They have all kinds of support in terms of consulting efforts that come to these individual restaurants to help them make progress in reducing their waste. They also have marketing support that goes forward for each of the restaurants as well. You can see what those are, listing in Sauce Magazine and some others, social media and newsletters. Next slide. All right. So what do we get out of it as Clayton? Hopefully we're promoting higher recycling and composting. We create awareness and education around waste diversion for not only our residents here in Clayton, but for everybody that comes here to dine. It prevents anybody from saying, oh yeah, we do that, when they really don't. It also really attracts people who value sustainability. Once I became more aware of Green Dining Alliance, I know the first question I always ask my servers, are you guys a Green Dining Alliance restaurant? And then it's interesting to see what they have to say. Next slide, real quick, we'll show you just some of the statistics where people are saying, yes, indeed, it's really important to me to have a company to implement sustainable environmental practices. You can see that's really 83% at the millennials, Gen Xs, which I wish I was, 66% and baby boomers at 62%. So more than half of the people in each one of the categories is saying they care about those things. So let's see, I think it's in Nielsen, it's 73% of consumers said they would definitely change consumption habits to reduce environmental impact and it shows up here. So let's flip to the next one. What does it cost? For each individual restaurant, it's $250. The first time they go through, it costs- The first time they go through, it costs more because there's a lot more hands-on upfront work by the Green Dining Alliance to provide that consulting support. After that, annually, it's $200. A lot of cities around us are offering subsidies to the restaurants to become part of GDA. They include Maplewood, Cortex, Brentwood, Webster Groves, and you can see what they are actually offering. In addition, the Cortex Group, The Grove and The Loop also have Green Dining Alliance programs. So Maplewood is doing $100 for certification or recertification. Maplewood was the first Green Dining Alliance corridor or district, if you will, across the United States. And they are still very much behind it and supporting it. And I don't know how many of their restaurants, I'm going to look at you, Jillian, 10 restaurants there that are a part of that. Webster Groves has just recently gotten on board with this and they are offering micro grants. You can see of up to $1,000 for changes that need to happen around energy efficiency and lighting and then up to $3,000 for restart grants. So the first $1,000 helps baseline for eliminating Styrofoam and single-stream recycling and the 3,000 helps cost of energy improvements, lighting, electric ranges, EV charging stations, that sort of thing. Next slide, and this is hopefully my last slide. The GDA costs and what we're asking for, I'm going to just cut to the bottom line, the second yellow banner you see. If we had 100% participation of 55 restaurants in Clayton, which is my best number right now, it would cost us about $1,000 a year. I got to tell you, in my wildest dreams, we will not get 55 restaurants. That would be awesome if we did, but I think it's extremely unlikely. But that's your top number for a first year out. If we have 50% of them, I think it would be terrific. But that's what we're asking for and what's coming by way of recommendation from the committee is that $13,750. And so that's, that's really what we're after. I had a lot more other, a lot of other things to talk to you about, but I'm going to ditch those because I want to save some time for Kate. So questions? Yep.
Cities actually enacted something that requires people, that requires restaurants to recycle and do sort of the minimum on green dining?
Well, I'll answer that question for Missouri. There are, there's legislation at the state level and I'll defer to our great counselor over there. That would be you, Mr. O'Keefe. Missouri does not allow us to ban things like single-use plastic bags or Styrofoam or that sort of thing. So it has to be carrots rather than sticks.
Okay, that answers that, I should have known that.
Unfortunately, we have room to grow in that area, but.
And then if we were to devote budget to it, how would we know that the restaurants were actually following through?
So we would know because they would sign up with Green Dining Alliance. They'd pay that initial fee, they would get started going through it. They have to continue in order to get recertified every year.
So who checks on that, the Green Dining?
Green Dining Alliance.
Okay.
So they're our partner in this. We do not have the bandwidth, the people or the support to do this on our own. So we're pulling them in as a partner.
Got it.
Loosely partner, Mr. O'Keefe.
So what would be the, like, if I'm a restaurant, and let's say we cover their entire cost of certification, how much cost is it actually them to do the program? I know it's relative to the restaurant, but like, is it, is us subsidizing this a drop in the bucket? In the grand scheme of how much it's going to cost them to implement it? Or is it actually meaningful?
I think it's meaningful, but I will also say it's going to be restaurant by restaurant in terms of how much change they require. Jillian, you may be able to fill more in on that than I can. But for some, as you see what Webster Groves, if you can go back a couple of slides and pull that up where it shows what Webster was doing, their micro grants and their certification fees, it's because some restaurants have huge needs to change. You want to take that?
Yeah. Hi. So actually, what I would say is I just went and did May Pop in Webster Groves using those lovely micro grants that we got here. And they had a lot less to change than other restaurants that are currently employing Styrofoam because that is a hard line for us, they cannot be using Styrofoam. So the cost upfront, I can see they can still be using single-use plastics in order to be part of our program. We give them like a tiered approach with a star rating. So their minimum to be a part of our, the Green Dining Alliance is a two-star rating. All they have to be doing is a single-use, single-stream recycling and they have to give us their waste stream data and they have to promise that they're going to stop using Styrofoam. So as long as they cover that, I will work with them to find the most cost-effective solutions. And we also have those grants that you were mentioning earlier to help cover that initial cost while they find what works best for them. So right now, we have access to a $500 grant from the REFed Catalytic Grant, sorry, it's quite long, through the EPA and that helps cover that. And we're also offering other carrots as well to help get them into composting. And some of that opens up possibly $40 a month in composting if they decide they are happy to give us as much data as possible. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
Yeah, the questions? Questions?
Just adding to that, too, there are several restaurants in Clayton. Deb, you can give the names, it seeds and whoever who are, who do, are part of Green Dining Alliance on their non-Clayton sites. And so some restaurants are really there and they'll probably be the first ones that would sign up because they don't have much at all to do. And it's also a, an advertising boost for those restaurants, especially as more and more of our surrounding communities and the restaurants in Clayton do it. There's a little bit of that peer pressure and it's inexpensive advertising. So the cost can vary a lot and the fact that so much of it is covered outside of the small investment we're being asked to make is, is really something that makes it, I think, really take hold. Once, once the changes are made within the restaurant, I think they're in pretty good shape.
Yes.
Yes, okay, good, that was short and sweet. Anything over here, question? Okay, I think this is, is great. And so we will definitely seriously consider that budget number and we'll get back to you, okay?
Good, we hope soon.
Yeah, soon.
Terrific.
And now you have the Dark Sky.
Yes, I want to just briefly introduce Kate Young, who many of you have met, but many of you have not. She has been our full-time intern over the summer and she's devoted hundreds of hours to the project. She's going to present to you in just a minute, the Urban Night Sky. This comes out of a request that Michelle made to me when I first was appointed to this committee. She said, Deb, I'd really like to have this. And I said, we'll get to it. And this year, because of Kate, we had a chance to get to it. She is working on her environmental analysis degree from Washington University, has honors in every place you can imagine, finished up at Amsterdam last spring, joined us in the summer and she's staying on. And I could say a lot of other wonderful things, but I'm not going to use any more of your time. Take it over, Kate.
Yeah. Hi, everyone, it's nice to meet you all or see you again. So yeah, so I'm just going to talk briefly about our application for Oak Knoll Park and Shaw Park. We've heard a lot about why those are such regional destinations in Clayton already, but we're applying for those to become certified as Urban Night Sky Places by Dark Sky International. So you can go to the next slide, please. So just to talk a little bit about what Dark Sky International actually is, it's a global lighting authority with a mission of restoring the nighttime environment and protecting communities and wildlife from light pollution. They carry out this mission through four main projects. The first is called International Dark Sky Places. This is where our project falls. And it really works to recognize parks around the entire world for their efforts to limit light pollution and also educate the public on why this is important. And to talk about why this is so a little bit, you can see on the graphic on that slide that in the last 75 years or so, this has become a major issue in the United States. Light pollution is really running wild. And this can be harmful in many different ways for both planetary, wildlife and human health. For example, light pollution can be really disorienting for birds when they're migrating. It's September, so it's actually migration season right now. St. Louis is also the fifth deadliest city in the country for birds. So this is a really significant and relevant point for this city in particular. In addition, the Midwest is seeing the largest declines in insect populations in the world. And lights can be really impactful on insects' abilities to engage in typical behaviors, including normal reproduction, which can of course be harmful for population health. And I'll talk a little bit more about human health in a couple of slides. Also, light pollution wastes a lot of money and energy from street lamps alone, which are a really small section of all the lights that could produce light pollution in the world. $2.2 billion is wasted from light pollution. So it's significant and limiting light pollution really does save a lot of different things and it's a win-win solution. So go to the next slide, please. So as I said, we're applying to be Urban Night Sky Places. These are urban sites or parks in this case that promote authentic nighttime experiences while being in dense urban areas that have a lot of light pollution. We have one right next door in Olivet with Stacy Park. We've worked a lot with Stephanie Todd, who's the Vice Chair of Dark Sky Missouri. And she really guided that park's kind of certification and ours as well. Go to the next slide, please. Now, before I go on, I want to be very clear that this project does not mean we have to turn off our lights at all. Really, it's to make our parks even safer and more accessible at night. Instead, Dark Sky just kind of creates these five parameters that the lights we do have need to follow. They include, and I think they're listed on the handout that you got, but they include being useful. So the park should really have a clear purpose. Also, they should be targeted. This means they should, they should be shielded. So they should be pointing directly where they want to go because that means they're more efficient. You can see in the graphic on the bottom left that when they're not shielded, that's when the light pollution happens and that's exactly what we want to avoid. Also, despite common beliefs that the more bright lights there are in an area, the safer it is, this can often not be true, which is shown in that graphic on the slide on the top right. When there's that bright light there, it kind of distorts your vision's ability to see what's going on in the shadow it creates. But when you block that off, it's very clear that there's actually someone in that doorway. So really, when you have bright lights, it can be a safety hazard, in fact. So this project really does make our safes, our parks even safer at night. Also, they should be controlled. This could be done through things like a motion sensor or a timer. In Oak Knoll Park, the parking lot already has motion sensors on all of the parking lot lights. They go down to 30% at night and then if they're activated, they come back up. And then they should also be at a warm color, 3,000 degrees Kelvin or lower, which you can see on that chart, it's more like the yellowy tone. I'll note that this is also recommended by the American Medical Association because really bright white lights can be associated with poor sleep quality, cases of disease and illnesses, including cancer and diabetes. And Clayton is actually already going down this path as well with our outdoor lighting, coordinate light, outdoor lighting standards ordinance. By 2026, all new and existing lights outside will need to be 3,001 degrees Kelvin or lower. So we're heading down this path already, which is great. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we are applying, after a lot of discussions on figuring out what would be the best nominees, we're applying Shaw Park and Oak Knoll Park for this designation. Next slide. The reason why we've chosen these parks in particular, Oak Park is pretty small, but has dense vegetation and really few amenities within it that can be, you know, contributing to this light pollution. Of course, Shaw Park is a lot bigger and it's got a lot of different facilities. However, with the athletic facilities, for example, those lights turn off an hour after gameplay. And then also they turn off at night in the pool as well. So it's not really an issue. And as has been said many times, it's really is one of the hearts of Clayton and this would really boost its status as a destination in the region. Next slide. So in terms of how we are eligible for this project, we fall into every category with flying colors. These are, of course, all public parks and we're certainly in an urban area. St. Louis's metro region has a population of over 2.8 million people. So we definitely qualify as an Urban Night Sky Place in that way. And across both parks, there are around 1,600 shade trees, which are trees about 25 feet and taller. And they do a great job of blocking any light from coming in. You can see in that photo on the top right, that's a picture of Shaw Park at night. And where the trunks are, you know, you can see the pool from behind the trees. But as soon as that leaf cover starts, it's really a wall and it doesn't let any light in. And all the trees in our parks are really successful at doing that. And then, of course, we're including the entire area of each park in our application. Next slide. So looking at the application process, it starts with the pre-application. So kind of just introducing ourselves and showing them that we're aligned with what they're looking for in these perks. And then we move on to our application fee and then our full application, which includes things like letters of support. We've already received one from Phil Valco at the Universe, at Washington University, Alex Elmstad at the Clayton Community Foundation and also Matt Barnett, or Barton, sorry, at the St. Louis Audubon Society. So we're trying to cover a kind of a large range of St. Louis organizations and kind of garner a lot of community support. We've also written a letter for the mayor and different community members in Clayton. We also have to complete a lighting inventory, just so that they have an idea of what lights we have in our parks and write and then adopt a lighting management plan, which was really more like a policy. We'll have 10 years to meet certain benchmarks to show that Clayton's parks are following those parameters that I described earlier, those five safety parameters. And then we'll also take two seasons of sky quality measurements. There's no like criteria we have to follow, it's just for our own knowledge. We've already done it for the summer, you can see examples of those numbers on the slide. And then we'll do it again in the fall. And we need one year of public outreach and education, which we also already completed through things like our newsletter, volunteering at musical nights, the list goes on. And once we're certified, we will submit annual reports to Dark Sky just to show that we're following all of the requirements that, you know, we followed when we first applied. So next slide, please. In terms of why this will benefit Clayton, first of all, it'll really bring attention to all the sustainable action that the city has already been doing and continues to do in terms of protecting our natural and built environment in the face of climate change, but also engaging the community in these processes as well. We've already seen many examples of that in this meeting alone. It'll also give us international recognition. These parks will be put on a list alongside a park in Japan and New Zealand and also things like Bryce Canyon and Grand Canyon, major parks within our country and around the world. We'd be on that list and so would Stacy Park and Olivet. So it kind of goes again to that regional effort to create a more sustainable St. Louis region. We will additionally gain access to the Dark Sky logo, which can just be important in creating educational or promotional materials. And we'll really solidify our, solidify our partnership with Dark Sky, which goes to, you know, adding to our credibility as a truly sustainable American city. You can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so where we are right now in this process, we've written the pre-application. It's been reviewed by multiple different people and we're making good progress on our full application. We still need a second season of sky quality measurements to complete that lighting inventory, writing and then having the city adopt the lighting management plan. And then, of course, we're going through that process of gaining letters of support and then working with the letter writers to get those signed. I've also given this presentation to the Sustainability Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission. They've both given their full support to move forward with this whole process. So that's really great. Okay, next slide, please. Yeah, so that kind of wraps up my presentation. As you can see, there are a lot of benefits that this could bring to Clayton and really just bringing awareness to the work that's already been done and continues to be done in the city. And so what we ask of you now is, again, support moving forward with the submission of the pre-application and the full application, then ongoing in those annual reports. So if I can clarify anything or answer any questions, I'm happy to do so, thank you.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. Thanks for all your work. If we, do we have any major questions about this right now? Okay, so one clarification, the budget impact.
Yeah, so it's $250 to apply. The pre-application is totally free. You submit it and there's no commitment. And then you submit the fee before you submit the full application.
And ongoing, it can fit in with our current plans to be maintaining and working with the parks. So any additional cost is minimal if any, you know, so there's not a budget asked true to the sustainability committees, correct? Okay, so thank you again very much. If you think of questions, let's go ahead and just email Tony and she'll work out the answers through you guys. And anyway, really great, I'm really excited about it, obviously. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah. All right. So I know we're starting a bit late, but we wanted to give that it's due. All right, so we will start our 7:00 PM meeting at 7:11. And will you please call the roll?
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Here.
Alderwoman Buse?
Here.
Alderwoman Patel?
Here.
Alderman Fader? Alderman Hummel?
Here.
Alderman York?
Here.
Air Harris?
Here.
City Manager Gibson?
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Now's the time for public requests and petitions. And I don't know if we have anybody here in our personal audience or real audience here or online that has a topic for us that's not on our agenda tonight. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. We have unfinished business, starting with the modification of motor, hours for motor-driven maintenance equipment.
Yes, the Board of Aldermen discussed leaf blowers and gas-powered lawn equipment on April 19th and July 19th, 2024. The attached ordinance would reduce the permitted hours for the operation of motor-driven outdoor equipment on weekdays for four contractors from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, as currently allowed, to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Residents maintaining their own property would still be permitted to use their equipment until 8:00 PM. This ordinance was first read on August 27th, 2024 and the effective date of the ordinance has been revised per the Board's direction from the date of adoption to November 1st of 2024. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance. And I would note that since it has been amended since first read, as far as the effective date's concerned, we would need to amend the ordinance. as far as the effective date's concerned, we would need to amend the ordinance when a motion is made.
So would we pass, we would make the motion for the ordinance as amended or do a separate?
We would need to amend it first.
Before second reading, a motion to amend the bill.
Okay. All right, well, first of all, just let me ask, do we have any further discussion? I'll open for discussion on the, the bill itself.
I only have, I, I wanted to confirm it got sent to all the trustees and it got communicated out.
It has not been.
Wouldn't we pass it, I guess?
No, yeah, I, my understanding was two weeks ago that we were going to make, we were going to send it out. Part of the reason why we waited two weeks was to send it out so that people would have time to provide comments and concerns before we passed it.
Perhaps we misunderstood that, but we did not send it out. We wanted to hold it, we could. Otherwise, if it passes, we certainly have time to, to notify them before it goes effective.
Okay, proceeding.
I'll leave it up to the board. My apologies.
I have talked to my long guy about it. How's that? I did talk to him, my long guy. Okay.
What was your long guy's reaction?
He, the, the timing is not an issue for him. He's more concerned about the eventual, perhaps, change of equipment requires. So this, he's really within these hours anyway, he said. Okay, so of course, we would need a motion to amend the date of adoption.
I will make a motion to amend the date of adoption to November one.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
The bill is attached with redlining. It's, it's given a bill number dot one, which, because the title has also changed.
So can I just introduce the bill as the dot one? Does that include the change?
It would be, if you wish, motion to amend Bill seven oh three eight by the text of seven oh three eight dot one.
Oh, perfect.
I'll introduce Bill number seven zero three eight with the language of Bill number seven zero three eight dot one, approving an amendment to section two fifteen point seven six five to modify the allowable hours of usage for motor-driven outdoor maintenance equipment to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. So let me clarify. I'm sorry. I thought we're doing this all in one step then rather than in two steps.
Vote on the motion to amend.
Okay, so.
And then we introduce the bill.
Okay, so, all right, so any discussion on the motion to amend?
Doesn't have a second. I'll second it.
Second that, okay.
Susan, second.
Second it?
Oh, I didn't hear you. I apologize.
Okay. Okay, but I'm willing to accept that second.
Second and third.
Okay, all right. Will you call the, you, you don't need to read it. It's just the amendment. So will you please call the roll on that?
It's an overall cause voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we introduce the main thing. Yeah.
So I will introduce, I'll introduce Bill number seven zero three eight point, seven zero three eight point one, approving amendment to section two fifteen point seven six five to modify the allowable hours of usage for motor-driven outdoor maintenance equipment to be read for the second time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven oh three eight dot one, second reading, in consideration for adoption, an ordinance pending section two one five dot seven six five to modify the allowable hours of usage for motor-driven outdoor maintenance equipment and setting an effective date for such amendment.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel. And York.
Aye.
Mayor Harris. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Now moving on to the resolution for the tenant bill of rights, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, the Board of Aldermen has discussed the establishment of tenant bill of rights multiple times. The tenant bill of rights does not create any new regulations, but is rather a compilation of existing provisions related to fair housing and housing standards contained within federal, state, and local laws. The resolution has been modified since August twenty-seventh to include warehouse statements relative to the compilation of regulations and lack of authority granted by the resolution. Staff, staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the resolution establishing a tenant bill of rights for the city of Clayton.
I'll open the discussion. Anybody have questions or comments? Okay, Alderman McAndrew.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, establishing a tenant bill of rights.
Second. Any discussion?
Second.
Whoops, you got it right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Right, great, we passed the resolution. Now we have a couple of public hearings, first being setting the property tax levies for fiscal twenty twenty-five.
Yes, each year the city must approve property tax levies, which are then submitted to St. Louis County for billing. Calendar year twenty twenty-four is not a reassessment year. Oh, did you need a, the public notice?
Oh, you can, yeah, well, you can go on and I'll do it.
Okay. Calendar year twenty twenty-four is not a reassessment year, therefore there is little change in previously assessed properties. The city experienced moderate new construction growth, which will hit the tax rolls, increasing residential assess, assess values by over two point eight million dollars and commercial assess values by over nine point one million dollars. Subject to the maximum voter-approved rate of the tax levy, the city is allowed to receive additional revenue up to the lower of five percent or the Consumer Price Index, which has been set at three point four percent for the year and for the value of new construction, of which, again, we've got a, a pretty substantial amount this year. Per the fiscal year twenty twenty-five proposed budget plan, we are submitted them, we are submitting the maximum allowable rates for the board's review. Under the City General Fund and Debt Service, the general fund tax levies may be used for any general purpose and are projected to generate approximately seven point five eight million dollars or approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars more than last year. The city has two levies to support debt service. The first levy supports debt service of the police building, and the second supports a general obligation bond approved by the voters in twenty fourteen, that was later refinanced in twenty twenty-two, that's used for neighborhood street resurfacing, street lighting, and alley improvements. Levies will generate approximately one point million dollars and nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars respectively. For a, for a home valued at seven hundred thousand dollars, it is expected that the homeowner would pay approximately eight hundred and seventy-one dollars in property taxes for the city of Clayton portion only. Based on last year's rate, the same homeowner would pay nine dollars more than last year to the city, assuming the assessed valuation remained the same. Under the Special Business District, we create, we have a tax levy for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget that is protected, projected to generate approximately six hundred and two thousand dollars, which is fifteen thousand more than last year. A commercial property located within the Special Business District, assessed at two million dollars, would pay approximately seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars in property taxes to the SBD. Based on last year's rate, the property would pay forty-five dollars more than last year, again, assuming the assessed value remains the same. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen conduct a public hearing and have a first reading of an ordinance setting the annual property tax rates for calendar year twenty twenty-four, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-five, at the rates referenced in the ordinance.
And let me just say that the public hearing is now open and requested proof of publication. I'll open the discussion. Any comments or questions from anyone? Anyone in our audience? Oh, yes, okay, very good.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I assume that this is a true statement, but I'll ask it to be sure. Are the numbers that we're looking at here consistent with what we've been shown in the past in terms of the revenue projections?
They are. The, the only thing that may change is when this goes through Board of Equalization, the number may shift a little bit. Typically, that happens between first and second readings, so if something changes before the next one, we'll let you know. But our revenue numbers are based upon the rates you see in front of you tonight.
The only question I have is historically, we've always been at the top, basically taxed as high as we could on all different residential commercials a whole bit.
We do, and it's eroded over time. I believe we started somewhere around, for instance, ninety cents on residential, and we're down at forty-nine point seven cents now, so.
But, but there's no gap in there. We're up as high as we can go.
We go up as high as we can.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. If there are no other comments, questions, discussion, I will close the public hearing.
I'll introduce Bill number seven zero four zero, an ordinance setting the tax year twenty twenty-four property tax levies for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four zero, first reading, in order of having and establishing annual taxes for general municipal purposes, police building debt service, general obligation debt service, and special business district purposes to be collected by the city of Clayton, Missouri for the year twenty twenty-four.
All right. Call the roll. Oh, it's, I just want to say it says roll call on here. Okay, I'm just following instructions. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, good. So we're doing the first reading?
First reading only tonight.
That's it, and we'll do the second one next, next time. Yes.
We'll leave the public hearing, yeah, open.
Yeah, leave it open. Yeah, okay.
That's up to, oh, yeah, open, close it for this one.
Oh, 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 I closed it, but I can reopen it, or I can just, yeah. Yeah. Well, yes. Okay, anyway, now we're moving on to the budget, the first reading. I'll open the public hearing and request proof of publication.
Yes, in August, the Board of Aldermen received the city manager's proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and capital improvement budgets. The board reviewed the proposed budget during a public meeting on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. As a part of the budget process, the board is required to hold a public hearing to seek public input prior to formal budget adoption. The attached ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and capital improvement budget is presented tonight for a first reading. A summary of the budget was included in the packet and includes a reconciliation of changes since the proposed budget was presented. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen conduct a public hearing and have the first reading of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and capital improvements budget as presented in the proposed budget. I will state, as far as the reconciliation is concerned, there was an increase in expenditures of a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and three dollars in the general fund. Of that, eighty-two thousand, four hundred and three dollars is attributed to that additional position within the Public Works Department, a municipal service worker one that would keep the business districts cleaned up. And there was another twenty-one thousand dollars that was added to the personnel line, and that had to do with basically merit increases within our step system. Exceptional performers can be granted an additional step if their evaluation plays out that way and they're recommended by department heads. So I believe we had eight employees that fell into that category of our total body of, of employees here. So that increase was included as well. So again, the net change from the last time you saw this was a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and three dollars. And if the board would like, I have an abbreviated presentation from what I gave last time, if you'd like to see it this evening, but I'll leave that up to you. Of course, entertain any questions you may have.
All right, open the discussion. Any questions or comments? Yes.
I have one thing, especially after the livable communities plan. We had talked, as we looked at the budget last time, about no, no line item for following up on that plan. And there was a feeling around the board table that when we knew actual numbers, that we would act on it. So that I, I can stand behind the decision not to have a line item in there, not have a place marker of, you know, ten thousand dollars if each for the next five years, as long as we all remember that commitment to actually follow through on the information we've gotten from the public.
I think the, the idea would be that when we have another, our next budget amendment, if we know at that point we want to do Project X and it's going to cost Y, we would then amend our budget as needed. That's, that's really the only way. I mean, that's the way to do it with the right number. Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. All right, then I will close the public hearing.
I'll introduce Bill number seven zero four one, an ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and capital improvement budget to be read for the first time by title only.
Second. Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four one, first reading, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, commencing on October one, twenty twenty-four, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Is it a voice vote or to call the roll? Okay, well, okay, just again, want to make sure I follow the instructions. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Good. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything there that they'd like to discuss? Good. We will, Alderman McAndrew, you want to make?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Hummel.
Aye.
Alderman York.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on now to the city manager's report, and the first item is the financial report.
I'll introduce Karen Dilber, our Director of Finance, for the next two items. The financial report and then the third quarter budget amendment.
Good evening. I'll start with the financial report, if that's okay. We're, we're on target. I mean, everything looks good through June. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. It does note that utility taxes are down year over year, and I, I did a history of the climate, and we had fewer extreme temperatures in twenty twenty-four than we had in twenty twenty-three, so that is why. Those are user-driven. Sales and use taxes are up five point eight seven percent. Parking is down. We had a parking agreement with St. Louis County for the bottom garage that was terminated in fiscal twenty-four. It's reflected in the fiscal twenty-five budget. I'm not sure if you remember us talking about it, but a portion of that contract affects fiscal twenty-four, and, and you'll see that there. And then contractual services are down, which is mainly driven by the waste contract. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. So I'm trying to find where we are on all of this. You're referring to the documents, I presume, here that start on page eighty-nine in our packet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Sure, I'm looking at them separately.
Okay. All right. So I just, a question about, I'm trying to find where I am here on. Oh, there's a graph on page ninety-three. It's the sales and tax revenue. It's a bar chart with blue, yellow, and green on it. And so it appears that from the size of the shaded areas that the use tax is projected to be much lower or is much lower for twenty twenty-four than other years by a large margin. I have no idea what the dollar amount is, but I'm wondering what's going on there.
All right, what is page ninety?
Well, our packet, it says ninety-three is the number that's on the page. It's page eighty-nine of the packet. So, and it's the, it's the very first page of your presentation.
Um, that's actually a rolling twelve-month period. So that's actual data for July through June as opposed to the entire fiscal year. I, I don't know why they would, why use tax would be down.
So use tax is going to fluctuate quite a bit. Use taxes collected on really two different things primarily. So the first one now is, is online sales tax for anything you may buy that doesn't have an actual physical location within the state of Missouri. So that attributes to some of that. The majority, though, of the use tax we collect is typically attributed to new buildings and retooling, perhaps, of, of buildings. If they're buying things that are out of state. Equipment for buildings is a, is a huge one. If you're buying things that are out of state, you basically have to pay the, the use tax on it because there's, there's no local tax on it. This particular year, it looks like it's less than it has been in the past, which isn't surprising, given the reduction in actual construction activity that we're seeing in the downtown area, and that's driven a lot of that in the past years. So I think we're going to see a, we, we may see a continued decline there, although we're still trying to figure out what that online tax portion will actually look like over time because it's still relatively new. But again, that's just going to be for vendors that do not have a presence within the state of Missouri. So everybody's mind goes to Amazon or that sort of thing right away, right away. But we don't get any kind of use tax off of those sales because if they have warehouse presence, and that, basically, those cities receive it as point of sale. So there's fluctuation there. The majority of what we get, though, is related to construction projects, and with that slowing down, I would expect that slowdown to continue. Okay.
Well, can I just interject one thing? So I, I understand the question is about use tax. And so I, I was just kind of looking through here because sometimes we split out our sales tax by actual, all these different categories, which you did do on page ninety-five of, of this packet. But in this, in that instance, use tax, the use tax numbers continue to increase. So fiscal twenty-four is, and this is through quarter three. I mean, fiscal twenty-four is greater than fiscal twenty-three. I, I, so I'm just saying, I, I don't want to split all the hairs, but it doesn't seem to be the same. Doesn't correlate with the green box.
And because it's a rolling twelve-month period, it could be that the fourth quarter of the previous fiscal year was less, which is, which would make it look smaller because it's a rolling twelve-month period as opposed to, so, you know, October first through the end of June.
Okay, so that's, so it's a timing thing.
Correct. If you do look at the detail, the numbers show that from a use tax standpoint, financially, numerically, we're higher than last fiscal year for this time period.
You know, I've lost track if you're still in the middle of your presentation or if you just are done and not ready for any questions, but.
She said everything was good and. She said everything was good and then turned it over to us.
So the, I, I just want to make sure that my assumptions are valid here. So now I'm looking at the analysis of revenue and expenditure summary of all funds, so sort of the, the bottom line. And so her amended budget shows a negative four million and our actual shows a positive five million. So huge, um, you know, nine million dollar plus difference. And so I'm guessing that that has to do with the fact that we haven't spent money out of the CapEx, IRF, and the bond funds. And if we added all those up or actually used those, then we would be more all in line with budget. But that's my question, is, is that the right assumption?
Yes and no. I mean, there are things we haven't spent yet, that is true. But the amended budget is a collection of the original budget plus the three budget amendments now that we've done. There are certain things we don't amend in each of these budgetments. Like, we don't amend the overall revenues every quarter because that would be a mess. So, so there are certain things we say for the final, uh, the fourth quarter budget amendment that are not reflected in this amended budget column because it's just too messy to, to do it throughout the year, if that makes sense.
Oh, that's, that's fine. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is what am I supposed to take from the fact that the amended budget shows negative four million and the actual shows a positive five? What, what, what am I supposed to conclude from that?
I could, I, I think you have a portion of that right, too. So the, the negative four point four that you see there on the amended budget, it does take into account some major projects on the capital side, including those lighting projects that, that run the total up on the construction bond fund, for instance. It's like two million dollars worth. But those projects were a little bit behind on as far as timing's concerned. So it's showing the negative number on the amended, but it hasn't materialized yet on the expenditure side. So there's some of that baked in as well. But as Karen said, there, there's going to be fluctuation within revenues that isn't captured yet. Another big area of savings that isn't probably captured there just yet are like certain savings on personnel. For instance, if we've had positions open throughout the year, we don't amend the budget as we go to capture those savings. We'll do that at the end of the year when we reconcile everything. So I think there's going to be savings in quite a few areas. So you're going to have savings on the personnel side. Revenue's probably going to be a little bit stronger than we anticipated, and some of these projects have delays. So it's going to appear, I think, at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, if you're looking at all funds, that we're in, you know, that we had this massive surplus. But when those construction costs actually hit for things like those two lighting projects and Whiteoun Forest and High Point Demone, you're going to see that swing the other way.
Is, i- i- is there a way, and I don't want to make, create a whole lot of work, but is there a way? Because I'm looking at the expenditure numbers, and it looks like it's a forty-six million dollar budget, and it's twenty-six million dollar now. Is there like any way to just get an easy couple line items as to what that twenty million dollar gap is? Which I think goes to Rick's point, like, it looks like we, we're expecting to spend forty-six million in the budget, and we spent twenty-six. I'm assuming, David, what you said, a lot of that's true, but is there any way to kind of get a brief understanding of, of what's all still out there? That is either going to be spent this year or not going to be spent this year?
We can kind of estimate it. Be really hard to dial that, that number in. But I mean, you still have a full quarter of, of personnel expenses that's going to be a, a really big number that isn't captured there. So you add that to the twenty-six, it's going to run that number up pretty quick. But the big savings, as we said, or the, the big gap is going to be on the, the major construction projects where the bill hasn't hit just yet.
Okay, that's fine then.
Those adopted budget numbers and amended budget numbers are the full fiscal year. When that one that's actual is just through June, so that's three quarters. So there's, there's gap in there for the, the final quarter.
Yes, if you look at the expenses to date, you know, if you figure the personnel's seventy-five percent or more of that, you're probably looking at, you know, another eight million dollars or so that you'll tack on to it. Now you're thirty-four, then you have deferred construction costs and other things. Okay. Along with savings in the personnel side, and it's, it's going to get your number pretty close. So we'll, we'll come up with that.
But so just again, from, to make sure that I'm not making a bad assumption. So I, I recognize that the amended budget is for a twelve-month period, correct? And the twenty-four actual through, through quarters for three quarters, right? So there's an annualization that goes on for both the revenue and the expenditures with the exception of these large one-time items, which are, to me, are the CapEx and the, uh, equipment and the bond fund items. Otherwise, it would seem with personnel as an example that we're going to get more revenue in the same prorata that we're going to spend money on recurring expenditures. So, but if, if that's not the right observation, then I'd like to understand why.
We can take a look at that, that analysis. The revenue will slow down, though, from, from what you have here because that revenue takes in all of the property tax that was collected on December thirty-first, where now it trickles in slower because it's, it's just sales tax and utility tax at this point.
Well, but coincidentally, it's, it's, it appears that this is, we're running like roughly eleven million dollars a quarter, which is about, I, I hear what you're saying, and intuitively, that makes sense. I'm just saying these numbers align up where it looks like we're going to get about the same amount of revenue.
We can take a look at it. The one thing that's difficult when we're having this conversation, looking at all funds, is that it's, it is taking everything and smashing it together. It's easier to break down your analysis if you look at each individual fund and, and try to figure out what those gaps are. We can do a little bit of an analysis on that and, and send that over. But I think it would be easier for everybody to see if we broke it down fund by fund so you can see what the, the gap is in each one and the reason for it.
And that, that's great. I appreciate that. Again, all I'm really trying to get to is to answer the question, how are we doing relative to plan? Are we doing better? Are we not doing better? And what are our challenges if we're not doing?
Overall, I think we're going to end up with a, a, a pretty good surplus this year because again, revenue is stronger. We've got savings on those personnel sides and, on the personnel side. And the fact that we have a lot of these, these bigger projects that haven't hit, that's going to be deferred. So when we reconcile, reconcile the end of the year, you're going to see a pretty good surplus for all funds. But again, going into, to next year, that construction number is going to ramp back up. It'll swing back the other way. But overall, I mean, we're, we're in good shape and we're ahead of where we thought we would be, especially on the, the operating side.
Great, thank you.
Good questions. Anything else on this? Anybody? Okay, great. Um, and I mean, have we, we haven't really, you haven't presented anything on the amendment to the budget. Are you, do you have something to talk there?
No, I just wanted to know if you had any questions, yeah, about that.
And those were just a couple of minor.
They kind of worked together there on some.
There was a couple of minor changes we had there. We had some increased permit revenue that we captured on the expenditure side. We had some facility-related improvements that are captured there. And then a really minor expenditure of seventeen thousand dollars. This was an additional payment for the ice rink. We actually had a contractor invoice that was erroneous that we previously received and paid. And then we received an updated bill for it, so we had to pay out another seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars on that.
Just got one quick question. And we're, the expenditures increased for flood repairs from July twenty twenty-two. It's more just curiosity, why has it taken so long for us to get flood repair done from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four?
They were having difficulty getting estimates, and there were supply chain issues.
Got it.
To get the material.
And also working through, trying to get some sort of female reimbursement for, for that as well.
We do have.
That's okay.
I just want to say thank you, uh, great work, but also thank you very much for continuing to split out the sales tax for us. I, I like to look at each category and how it's been going. So for the last four years, we see those trends and by quarter, and we'll see them in total at some point. But I think that really helps us gauge how our, our businesses are doing and thus how we'll be doing. So thank you.
And as always, if anybody would ever like to sit down and look through this in more detail, we're, we're happy to do that at any time.
And to follow up on that, we are working on getting the detail from fiscal year eighteen nineteen so that you can see five years of data that doesn't include COVID.
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, any, okay, any more discussion? All right, uh, let's see, so where are we? So, great, that was just the report. And then on the budget amendment, we've had that report. So if there's no discussion or questions, we can introduce the bill.
I'll introduce bill number seven zero four two, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four third quarter budget amendment to be read for the first time by title only.
Second, any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four two, first reading, in ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven zero four two on the day of its introduction.
Second? Good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the board reflect, let the minutes reflect the board's given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number seven zero four two, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four third quarter budget amendment to be read for the second time by title only.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four two, second reading, in consideration for adoption, in ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
All the roll.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse? Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Okay, next, bill number seventy forty-three, the notice of tenant bill of rights.
Yes, the Board of Alderman has now established a tenant bill of rights, which was resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. Section four of the tenant bill of rights requires the following access to information. First, the tenant bill of rights or notice thereof must be posted on the premises of each rental property containing three or more units. And secondly, the property owners or their designated property managers must provide a copy of the tenant bill of rights to each leaseholder. The attached ordinance will make the notification requirement enforceable. I'll also note that the effective date on this has also been pushed out to November first in the bill that's in front of you rather than effective immediately. That way, we have time to inform anyone that may be impacted and put a system in place here in City Hall.
Okay, I will open the discussion. Anybody want to make any comments or have any questions about this?
I was just like practically speaking, then, David, will you just send an email out to property owners informing of this? Is that?
Yeah, so we'll go into our system and see where we have rental properties, and we can find owners that way. We also want to set this up where we establish the QR code and, and build this into our system so that when inspections are set up and that sort of thing, then we can inform people at that time as well. But we will inform property owners we have information for.
Could you?
Oh, and just, and then, then the property owner will provide, um, a copy, you know, to each person that then rents in the building. Would you imagine, are we giving them the ability to do it electronically?
Yeah, so we can do, we can do it, yeah, that, that's okay. How they transmit that, whether it's a piece of paper or they give it to them electronically.
Landlord says, I'm going to give you a copy of the tenant.
Yeah, we, we also have the ability to embed a QR code in, in the actual permit forms and those types of things as well. So we'll make sure that it's out there.
Okay, I mean, I just think it, you know, otherwise it's just going to get thrown in the garbage.
Yeah, as far as the method, you know, how they post it on the property, there will have to be, you know, something physical there for that. But what they're handing to tenants, that could be electronic.
Okay. And we have the opportunity to provide this to tenants who are coming in for an occupant fee permit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could we just, um, could you consider just dropping a little note in the city view next time it goes out? Like post November first? Yeah, just to be like, hey, look, so that way everybody knows.
It'll be this and the contractor hours will be in there.
Right.
Cool.
So this has to be posted if there are three or more units, but every landlord should be giving it to their tenant, even if it's like a duplex.
Yeah, all, all renters should receive notice of this. They only have to post it physically if there's three or more units. A lot of the two-family buildings just have separate entrances, but the three, you start to see the communal space.
All right, so I think we need to approve an amended, an amendment to the ordinance first with a different, uh, uh, date.
Uh, this would be, this would be first introduction.
Is it already amended in the text?
It's already.
It's already done, right.
I just wanted to point it out that it was a future effective date.
All right, then we can just move on, yeah.
I will introduce bill number seven zero four three, in ordinance establishing section two twenty, two twenty-five point zero nine five to require notice of the tenant bill of rights to be read for the first time by title only.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four three, first reading, in ordinance establishing section two two five point zero nine five, notice to tenant, of tenant bill of rights.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right.
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number seven zero four three on the day of its introduction.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes reflect the board's given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number seven zero four three, in ordinance establishing section two twenty-five point zero nine five to require notice of the tenant bill of rights, tenant bill of rights to be read for the second time by title only.
Second? Question? City Attorney.
Bill number seven zero four three, second reading, in consideration for adoption, in ordinance establishing section two two five point oh nine five, notice of tenant bill of rights.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman York?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
All right, well, we, next thing is, the last thing is our resolution to approve the CRSWC budget. We heard all about it. So, city manager, do you have a report for us or?
Yes, I have a, a really brief report here. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five CRSWC budget includes revenues and expenses for the period October first through September thirtieth for the three CRSWC funds, which are operating, equipment replacement, and capital. The Clayton Recreation, Sports, and Wellness Commission considered the budget on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and approved it as proposed. On September fourth, twenty twenty-four, the budget was presented at the joint meeting of the Board of Alderman and Board of Education. Overall, the fiscal year twenty twenty-five CRSWC budget reflects four million, ninety-one thousand and forty-eight dollars in revenue and four million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars in expenditures with an anticipated total shortfall of six hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And of course, the two parties would split any deficit at the end of the year. Staff recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the CRSWC budget for fiscal year twenty-five estimated.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments?
Just a comment, I just want to thank Tony. Because I think she and Valerie just put a lot of work into putting together the budget this year. And I don't know how many of you go to the center, but I really, I have lived here now fourteen years. I've been going to the center for fourteen years. I remember when we lived in Seattle, I called, there was a woman named Renee that sat at the front desk who was unbelievable, and I just needed to find a soccer team for Anna to, to be on. But she was awesome, so I've been going to the center for fourteen years. And I really can say that I don't think it's ever been run as well. It's never looked as good. It's never, um, been so welcoming and just, just a great environment. So I want to thank Tony for that. And I am very proud to have been the president of this commission the last couple of years. And, um, I just, I just wanted to say thank you, Tony, because I really do think the center looks great.
No doubt, just due to your presidency, it's really was, okay. Right, well, of course, yeah, that, that's great, and it does look great, yeah. Any other comments or questions? All right, um, if there aren't, we will have a motion.
I will move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, the CRSW, CRSWC fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. That is our agenda. We blew through it in good time, and I think at least some of us may want to watch the debate. But I will defer to this group. If you have something earth-shattering that you'd like to share in a roundtable, let me know, let us know. But otherwise, we can skip that for this week. All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.